Okay, team, we are gonna be starting, it is seven P M. Alright, so um this is the legislative meeting for the mayor and council for the city of Mount Rainier. This is a virtual meeting for today, June third, twenty twenty five, seven P M. I'll do the official call to order. Um Joseph Jakuta?
Present.
Jenny Hoffauer?
Present.
Danielle Carr?
Present.
Valerie Woodall?
Here.
Alright, so we have full court with me, including being present. Valerie, can you please help me with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item number two, review of the agenda. Uh, the mayor council review the agenda for the meeting, adding and deleting topics of interest or discussion. Valerie, can you help me out with that, please?
Yep, um one, call to order, pledge of allegiance, we just did that. Um two, review of agenda, the mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, public, oh, I'm sorry, uh mayor and council member event announcements. Number four, public comment, please see page three of the agenda where the rules for public comment are listed. If you wish to speak, please advise during the virtual meeting. Old business, number five, second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero three, twenty twenty five, budget amendment number two, fifteen minutes. The mayor and council will have a second reading of and adoption of ordinance number O three, twenty twenty five, budget amendment number two. Six, second reading and adoption of resolution number zero two, twenty twenty five, proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the second reading and adoption of resolution number zero two, twenty twenty five, proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month. Uh, new business, number seven, discussion and vote on legislative meeting calendar for F Y twenty twenty six, ten minutes. The mayor and council will vote on the legislative meeting cal- calendar for F Y twenty twenty six. Number eight, vote on council recess for July and August twenty twenty five, ten minutes. The mayor and council will vote on going into recess for July and August twenty twenty five. Um, number nine, first reading of resolution number zero three, twenty twenty five, nominating members to the city's design review uh committee, L M U T C. For a two-year term beginning on July sixth, twenty twenty five. The mayor and council will have the first reading of resolution number zero three, twenty twenty five, nominating members to the city's design review committee, L M U T C. For a two-year term beginning on July twenty, July sixth, twenty twenty five. Number ten, first reading of resolution number zero four, twenty twenty five, proclaiming May as Jewish heri- uh Jewish American Heritage Month, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the first reading of resolution number zero four, twenty twenty five, proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Eleven, uh vote on approval of minutes, five minutes, the mayor and council will vote on approving the following minutes. April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, work session and budgets, budget legislative meeting for proposed F Y twenty six budget. May sixth, twenty twenty five, legislative meeting amended, May twelve, twenty twenty five, special legislative meeting. Number twelve, presentation of minutes, five minutes, the city clerk will present the May twenty, twenty twenty five work session minutes to the mayor and council. And number thirteen, adjournment.
Go ahead and read the events, Valerie, as well.
Upcoming events, Recreation Committee Pride Day, uh Saturday, June seventh, twenty twenty five, ten A M to twelve P M from Mount Rainier Elementary School to the Gateway Farmers Market.
Okay, thank you so much. And um so before I go into um into anything else, a part of the um events reminders, and you have under an hour to vote today for the special elections to elect the county executive. If you haven't already done so, please hit to the polls. Rolling Chris is the uh polling place that is closer um to us. So um I I was asked to like remind people, um since I know um with the various elections we've been having, it has been a little bit a little bit challenging for a lot of people to follow, but um thank you for those that like voted early, melted in ballots. But also who showed up um today and everybody that's volunteering uh volunteering. And as a judge for the elections today, we definitely appreciate the work that you're doing. Alright, so you guys have heard the full agenda being read, any objections on the agenda? Here and now, it has been approved by consensus. Alright, so item number three, mayor council events announcements. Please stick to um events that are city related, we love you guys, or that have like any city uh any cities connection to it, okay? Alright, Valerie, do you wanna go first, since I asked you to do the rec committee, but if anything else you need to add about it, or anything that has to do with the schools?
Friday, uh uh June sixth, the Mount Rainier Elementary School is hosting their Peace Day Parade. Um, so they will be parading around, there will be some street closures. Um, but come out and support um Mount Rainier Elementary School as they celebrate hundred days of peace. Um, and it's a, it's a tried and true tr- tradition for this school and the community, so and support them.
Um, Neighborhood Design Center as well. Sorry, Valerie, this is all on your, on your plate, it's ver- it's a very busy uh three days.
Yes, also on Thursday, uh June fifth and Friday, June sixth, the Neighborhood Design Center has their placemaking conference at Joe's Movement Emporium. Um, they will be doing a number of um build days and um events. Uh, and there will be a lot of people coming in and out of the city of Mount Rainier to learn about placemaking and placekeeping and uh police building, so that'll be happening on Thursday and Friday as well.
Did they get a uh? Hold on, wait, 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 Jenny, hold on. Um, right now is the announcements, if you guys have a question, at the end of the announcements, you could go ahead and raise it. Um, but I'm pretty sure one of us is gonna cover, um, okay? So we'll go around and then on it, but this is not a Q and A at this point. Alright, so either the parade, the pride parade, and also the neighborhood design on it. Um, so for the road closures, there's been road closures for everything. Um, the uh peace parade hasn't had one because they're moving, they'll move very fast. So there's no point for us to close, and in the past years, we have not done road closure. Because by the time they move, um, by the time it's closed, it's like they already moved, so it's a quick one. So the city of Mariner is advertising all the different clothes, uh road closures. Um, they are gonna be sending, and we have been putting out the peace parade map out as well as any closure that's gonna happen uh for pride uh parade, the signs already up as well in the community. So um for a couple of them, and the other ones are gonna be honest, so that uh that's something that they've been doing as well. Alright, uh Joseph, go ahead, and then Jenny?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that our state delegation, Senator Augustine and delegates Fennell and Ivy, as well as neighboring delegate Taveras are hosting a community health fair at the Brentwood Fire Station um on the twenty first of June, it's from eleven to three. There'll be health screenings, COVID tests, uh mental health and wellness support amongst other things. So if you, if you want, please stop by. Also, wanted to make sure everyone was aware that our, our county council member, uh Wenika Fisher is hosting a recap of the county budget on June eighteenth, um it is on Zoom, and you can register at bit bit dot L Y slash D two budget recap. And that's from six to seven on June eighteenth, thank you.
Alright, perfect, Jenny?
I have nothing to add.
Alright, Danielle?
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, want to remind everybody that the cert meeting is this month, on Monday, the twenty third. They'll meet at the Police Department um at seven o'clock P M. Also, this coming Friday, the um food distribution with the Food Bank at First um Baptist Church of Mount Rainier will be from eleven A M until two, until one P M, and it's suggested to come line up early, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys so much. Uh, when it comes to the information regarding um Councilman Fisher and um the health fair for District forty seven, they're gonna be shared also through our social media, so that way uh people are aware. We wanted to make sure we don't overflow them, because there's like three different things going on, and we just finished happily bombarding them with a Mount Rainier Day event. So as far as announcement, thank you to the whole entire Mount Rainier staff for putting together um a wonderful Mount Rainier Day. I'm always very honored to be the chair of the committee. Uh, but Mr. Kamali has put an excellent team together to make sure we make it happen, and it takes close to a year. Uh, today we had a recap of like, um, you know, plus and things we need to work on, which went very um successful. I think that overall people liked the new location, we're very um happy with the entertainment. And we're rebuilding for the next year, so to all the residents that showed up and the talent as well, thank you guys so much. And to our wonderful um sponsors that, you know, help us making it happen, we definitely appreciate your, your hard um work. The other thing to point out, um school, um final day for the public school system, since we have two of them, is on the eighteen. Uh, the schools already had their final, I believe, um walk to school day. Uh, the city of Mariner participates in collaborations with them to make sure um either we um help take one of the groups from one of the cities and collaborate to make sure the kids are safe. So in doing that, Valerie read the um event, when it comes to um pride parade, please um, please join us. And if you're not part of the parade, come out and cheer uh the participants. And the ending location is gonna be uh the farmer's market, so we look forward to seeing you. The other thing is like, I didn't add it to the agenda, but we're gonna work on making sure we add some stuff, is um, it is pride month. Yeah, pride month, uh the flag is already up at City Hall. Um, we get very creative, because uh we're still in a temporary location, we don't have a pole, but it is um nicely and firmly attached to our wall. And we look forward to continue uh celebrating pride. And Millie, do you have the resolution, um, so I could, um, so I could um show it on the screen? So um, a couple of years ago, right? Um, back in twenty twenty, I wrote a resolution um establishing a June as pride month. And we were actually the first uh city in the area to raise the pride flag. And ever since then, uh we have um collectively worked in many, many, many ways to make sure that um we continue celebrating uh pride. So Valerie, can you do me a favor and just read through it, please?
Yep. Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty, a resolution designated the month of June as pride month in the city of Mount Rainier and directing that the pride and transgender uh flag be flown at City Hall annually in the month of June, introduced by council member Selena Bietas. Whereas the city of Mount Rainier strives to be a place where all residents and visitors feel accepted and welcome. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, L G B T Q uh community um which contributes to the enrichment of the city, and the city is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas cities across the United States recognize June as a month for L G B T Q persons and their families and allies to celebrate pride, historical awareness and civil protest. And whereas in the current political climate, it is crucial to advocate for inclusivity, equality, and respect for all people. And particularly for those who are marginalized, discriminated against, and targeted for abusive or malicious behavior. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the pride flag, which flew at the San Francisco Gay Freedom Pride, uh I'm sorry, Gay, Gay Freedom Day Parade uh celebration on June twenty fifth, nineteen seventy eight, has served ever since as a symbol of the L G B T Q pride and civil rights movements flown in various cities. And whereas on June sixth, June twenty sixth, twenty fifteen, the U S Supreme Court struck down all state bans on same-sex marriage, legalized it in all fifty states, and required uh states to honor out-of-state same-sex marriage licenses in the case um Obergefell versus Hodges. And whereas June twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, was the fiftieth anniversary of the Stonewall riots in nineteen sixty nine, when patrons of a New York City gay bar called Stonewall Inn fought back against police raids, sparking a larger protest, a pivotal point in leading to the gay liberation movement and the modern L G B T Q rights movement in the United States, and has empowered human rights uh movements around the world. Whereas the Pulse attack was, at the time, the deadliest mass shooting in the modern history of the United States, and is the worst terrorist attacks on the United States soil since September eleventh, two thousand and one. And whereas many residents, uh student, I'm sorry, whereas many residents, students, city employees, business owners, and elected officials within the city of Mount Rainier who have contributed greatly to the enrichment of our city are part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community. And whereas progress has been made with respect to equitable treatment of um lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning persons throughout the nation, but there continues to be some opposition against people from this community and the world, making it important for the city of Mount Rainier to stand up and show support for city residents who are affected. And whereas on June fifteenth, twenty twenty, the United States Supreme Court ruled that L G B T Q people are protected from employment uh discrimination under title um um, oh, I'm sorry, eleven of the Civil Rights Act of, I'm sorry, Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four, which makes it illegal for employers to discriminate, and therefore, an employer who fires an individual merely for being gay or transgender defies the law. And whereas the rainbow flag throughout the month of June is a public acknowledgement that the month of June has been designated as L G B T Q pride month in the city and symbolizes the city's uh stand on inclusion and equality and its celebration of diversity and support for the civil rights of the L G B T Q community. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Mount Rainier declares the month of June as L G B T Q. Uh, pride month recognizes the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally. Invites everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together uh with a commitment to mutual respect, inclusivity, and understanding. Be it further resolved, that the city of Mount Rainier will recognize pride month by flying the rainbow flag at the city hall uh during the month of June, the L G B T Q plus flag will be raised on May twenty second through the month of June. And be it further resolved, we call on our elected officials to pass similar resolutions in support of the L G B Q, L G B T Q community where there is none, and expand legislation in support where there is. And be it further resolved, that a signed copy of this resolution will be sent to Prince George's County Executive Angela Alstonbrooks, U S Senator Chris Van Hollen, and Ben Cardin, Forty-seventh District, U S Representative Anthony Brown, Senator Malcolm Augustine, delegates Diana Fennell, Julian Ivy, and Wenika Fisher, Prince George's County Public Schools Board Member Pamela Boozer Struther, and Prince George's County uh Board of Education, and the Prince George's County Council. This resolution was adopted by the mayor and city council of the city of Mount Rainier the sixteenth day of June twenty twenty.
Thank you so much, Valerie, and I chose to read the resolution instead of the proclamation, because I think it's good that we um are in tune of how we felt um a few years ago, right? Strong enough to pass it, and more than ever, um, you know, the collective um is under severe attack. Um, there's news today that the ship um named after um, you know, represented milk. Um, they wanna remove, remove the name, and in a sense, like it erased a lot of the history. So it is important as a city to stand together with, with our diverse community, and this is a symbol of the fact that we haven't done it, we have been doing it for a while. But also the fact that we'll continue standing with our community members and showing inclusion and representation. And um, and the resolutions are a little bit longer there, there, they get outdated very quickly, and this is the reason why we write, I write proclamations. But I think it was important to um put the bigger document and read it, so thank you guys for that, okay? Alright, so now we're moving on to public comment. Can you go ahead and go, there you go. Alright, so let me read the rules for public comment. The mayor and city council invite and welcome comments at the public meetings, the mayor at or presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourself, first and last name for full recording purposes, and give the name of your street and block number, I G forty-three-hundred, Block of Thirty-Four Street. Please indicate in the chat whether you would like the mayor to read your comment, or you will speak on your comment. You could do one or the other. Um, public comment has a time limit of three minutes per speaker unless otherwise agreed upon by the mayor. While speaking, please maintain a courteous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to launch a complaint about performance or conduct of city employee, please bring it to the attention of our city manager, Mr. Kamali, who will look into the matter and respond to you. As the courtesy to the residents and businesses, the council requests that speakers not use the specific address or names of individuals when describing a situation or making a complaint, noting the block is preferred over a specific address. Alright, so can you go back to top? So if you choose to make a comment, the chat is open for public comment. And name, last name, block number, example, thirty-seven-hundred, Block of Thirty-Seven Street. Let us know, and if you need me to read it, just write read on it in order for me to be able to read it. Um, so it's open. Um, Jared, um, I no longer have to say with an E D, because I don't have the other Jared officially here. Um, is there anything on Facebook? Okay. So I see nothing on the chat. Okay. Alright, at this moment, I'm gonna officially close public comments. And we're gonna be moving on into old business. Item number five, second reading adoption ordinance, O three dash twenty twenty five, budget amendment number two. This is fifteen minutes allocated for it. The mayor and council will have the second reading adoption ordinance, number O three dash twenty twenty five, budget amendment number two. For those that are recently joined us, so we like a reminder, the budget amendments are done through the year in order to adjust the budget with various things that we have in mind. Um, in this budget amendment, and uh it includes grants that we have got, so you'll see them coming in as um coming in as money and exiting as funding as well in order to balance the budget. Also, we had to move uh funding in order to be able to fix um the police department uh roof as well as the money that we have saved for Potts Hall, we need to like take it out now to be able to pay, you know, some of the bills. And that money, more or less, we have been saving money for Potts Hall for the uh Potts Call project, I think it's been more than, I'm sure could tell you, more than ten years in the making, I think close to fifty to twenty years. Because when I came around, they were already talking about it, right, Mr. Kamali, and then you came right before me.
It was. Yes.
Do you know what year?
Yeah. It's uh started in two thousand fourteen, the design of the building, and it's been there almost eleven years.
Yeah, so just as a point of reference, uh we cannot do a line that says saving for Potts Hall, that's not allowed. So we put it in the rainy fund in order to be able to save money towards um, towards what we need to do. So redlining is not allowed as part of um our savings. All the money in the savings has to go in the same pot, because that way, um, if something happens, uh you're able to utilize that money. Okay, so in doing that, I have the budget amendment number two in front of me. Uh, go ahead and read the first paragraph, and then, Mr. Kamali, I'll leave it to you, or I say Ron Wilson, whoever, um, you want me to send it to Ron Wilson, Mr. Kamali?
Yes, please, Ron is here, and he will take care of it.
Okay, so I'll read the first few lines, and then I'll move over to um the budget amendment so that we could be read. This is a voting um item at this point, okay, so just make sure you're aware of this. Um, okay, so city of Mariner, Maryland, ordinance O three dash twenty twenty five, budget member number two, authorizing a movement of grant funds in the fiscal, authorizing movement of grant funds in fiscal year twenty twenty five budget um between line items. Whereas the city of Mariner budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five was adopted by ordinance O three dash twenty twenty four in April twenty twenty four. And whereat, it has been deemed necessary to transfer funds between line items to meet current demand for goods and services. And now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Mount Rainier. You guys have to put mayor and council, all the city council, one or the other, because the council is just the four of them. Um, that the following transfer funds between appropriations should be made to the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget of the city of Mount Rainier. And revenue not included in grants. Alright, Ron, our financial consultant and guru right here, it's all yours for you to read right through it.
Okay, revenue not including grants. Um, item forty-seven oh seven, use of fund balance for Potts Hall. We're adjusting upwards by a million and a half to a revised budget of two and a half million dollars. Um, expense items not including grants, account fifty-seven oh one, Potts Hall Welcome Center. We are uh adjusting upwards by a million and a half to two and a half million dollars. Item fifty-six hundred P D, building and maintenance, building, maintenance, and repairs. We are increasing uh this item by sixty-four thousand three hundred to a total of seventy-five thousand. Item fifty-six hundred C H, City Hall, building, maintenance, and repairs. We are decreasing by fifteen thousand to a new budget of three thousand. Fifty-six hundred P W, Public Works, Building, Maintenance, and Repairs. We are decreasing by ten thousand to a new budget of twelve thousand. Item fifty-seven oh one P D, Retirement Plan Contribution. We are decreasing by thirty-one thousand five hundred to a new budget of one hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-four. Item fifty-one oh seven C H, City Hall, Retirement Plan Contribution. We are reducing by twenty-eight hundred to a new budget of twenty-nine thousand seven seventy. Item fifty-one oh seven A D M, Administrative Services. We are decreasing by five thousand dollars to a new budget of thirty-four thousand and fifty-eight dollars. Next section, Grant Revenue. Um, account zero three, forty-six ninety-eight ARPA. We are increasing by three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to a new budget of one million seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Item forty-seven hundred point forty-five, Richardson Park. We are increasing uh by one hundred and five thousand dollars, seven, one hundred and five thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And that is the new budget for that line. Um, item forty-seven hundred point forty-six, State of Maryland Capital Grant for Potts Hall. We are increasing by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's the new budget amount. Item forty-seven hundred point forty-nine, P G County Richardson Park. We are increasing by a hundred thousand dollars, and that's the new budget. Item forty-seven hundred point forty, uh D H C D, Thirty-Fourth Street, Facade Phase Two. We are increasing by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is the new budget amount. Item forty-seven hundred point forty-three, Project Restore two point O. We are increasing by two hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, and that's the new budget uh for that line. Item forty-seven hundred point fifty-one, M E A Solar Panels for City Buildings. We are increasing by four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and that's We are increasing by four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars and that's the new budget. Item forty seven hundred point forty seven, DHCD Mural. We are increasing by ten thousand dollars and that's the new budget. Item forty seven hundred point twenty one, State of Maryland Capital Grant for the Police Basement. We are increasing by three hundred thousand dollars and that's the new budget. Item forty seven hundred point forty two, PACT twenty twenty five, that's the Police Accountability Grant. We are increasing by thirty four thousand four eleven and that's the new budget. Item forty seven hundred point forty four, Community Grant for the Police Department. We are increasing by fourteen thousand and that's the new budget. Uh item forty seven hundred point thirty nine, CBT Pet Waste. We are increasing by seven thousand and that's the new budget. Uh the next section is the offsetting grant expense. Um item zero three fifty seven ten CH, ARPA for Richardson Park. Uh increasing by fifty thousand and that's the revised budget. Item zero three fifty seven oh one, CH City Hall ARPA for Pots Hall. We are increasing by two hundred and eighty thousand and the revised budget is six hundred and eighty thousand. Item fifty seven ten point forty five, Public Works, Richardson Park from the MDNR. We are increasing by a hundred and five thousand seven hundred and twenty six and that's the new budget. Item fifty seven oh one point forty six, City Hall, that's the State of Maryland Capital Grant for Pots Hall. Uh we're increasing by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's the new budget. Item fifty seven ten point forty nine PW. PG County Richardson Park, we're increasing by a hundred thousand and that's the new budget. Item fifty seven hundred point forty, EV Economic Development. That's the DHCD thirty fourth street facade phase two, we're increasing by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's the new budget. Item fifty seven hundred point forty three, Economic Development, Project Restore two point O. That we are increasing by two hundred and eighty eight thousand eight hundred and that's the new budget. Item fifty seven hundred point fifty one CH, um the MEA Solar Panels for City Buildings, we are increasing four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars and that's the new budget. Item fifty eight ninety nine point forty seven, Economic Development, DHCD Mural. We are increasing by ten thousand and that's the new budget. Item fifty seven oh eight point twenty one, Police Department, the State of Maryland Capital Grant for the Police Basement. We are increasing by three hundred thousand and that's the new budget. Item fifty eight ninety nine point forty two, Police Department, the PACT twenty twenty five grant. We are increasing by thirty four thousand four eleven and that's the new budget. Item fifty eight ninety nine point forty four, Police Department, that's the Community Grant for the Police Department. Four uh we are increasing by fourteen thousand and that's the new budget. Item fifty eight ninety nine point thirty nine, Public Works, the CBT Pet Waste. Um we are increasing by seven thousand dollars and that's the new budget.
All done, Ron?
Yes, unless you want me to read the language at the bottom.
What is the language at the bottom?
Uh Melissa, can you scroll? I think it's the just the signature section.
Okay, it's just the ordinance adopted by, so Mel- Melissa and Mr. Kamali, can you guys make sure that it says mayor and council on it? That'll be my edit to it. On both sides of the document, okay? And then I'm gonna open it up to uh to council, um as I said, and I wanna make sure I make something clear. We don't have a rainy fund, it's called a fun, fun, you know, that's what it is, F U N D, alright? Um for the community, it'll be uh some people will call it rainy fund, but that's not what it is. It's similar. Alright, so in doing that, um I'm gonna open it up to uh council, uh Mr. Kamali, before open up to council, anything else to to add?
No, Mayor, as you mentioned, we just wanna make sure that the community and the council understand that we don't have a rainy day fund, uh we just keep our saving under fund balance. And that was the one that uh and appreciate you explained it, I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that. And we are here with Ron to answer any question if the council or the community have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. Uh better put that way, I think that sometimes when I try to translate it into words that like the community could understand a little better. It gets a little confusing, but that's basically what it is, is basically our savings account. And every penny is accounted for while we go through the budget, through the year and after. So that's uh the great job that you guys are definitely doing and making sure that everything's accounted for. Okay, so I'm gonna go open it up, I'm gonna start with Jenny.
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you Jenny. Uh Joseph?
I have a comment and a question first. I wanna say it's great to see how many increases there are from the on the grant side. It's just a testament to all the great grant writers we have on staff, bringing in funds for the city. Um I did have one point of clarif- well, maybe two points of clarification on the 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 fund balance. I've been viewing this as like a savings account where, you know, you're saving up for a large purchase. Um but wait, maybe you're also saving up for when the roof gets a hole in it, so it would be serving both purposes. And so I hope that clarification is correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do also wanna know what the current amount is in the fund balance and what will be after the one point five is moved.
Sure, well.
Go ahead.
Ron.
Sure.
You you wanna answer it or you want me to answer it and?
I I can do it.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, please.
So after the one point five um use of fund balance for for Pots Hall, we will have five point nine mil- uh I'm sorry, five point eight million dollars in our fund balance. Fund balance is strictly the difference between all of our assets and all of our liabilities. So you can think of it as the net worth of the city. Um so not all of our assets are in cash, uh of course. So o- of that, we we have four point nine million dollars currently in uh investment accounts.
Yeah, and that number does change as the budget comes to an end. Whatever's utilized for the budget for this year goes into um it goes into the account, so it doesn't like evaporate. This is the reason why we keep reminding people that all the line items are there. It's not there to be um wasted to the last penny, because anything that's on, it moves into um our, you know, our balance account. Uh Joseph, that was your question? Did that clear up?
Uh may I ask one follow up then? Um how liquid are the uh the accounts and investments? Are they easily used if we are in need over the next year or are they um?
Yeah, so they're they're um a- almost all in the, what's called the um the Maryland Local Government um Investment Program. Um it's highly liquid, we we can get funds within a day or two by uh by wire transfer. Uh and they are um invested in uh extremely short duration government security bonds, basically.
And that that certainly sounds to me like we have enough in 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 case of emergency. Thank you for.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been building that that pot um for many years, and that's the reason when people um ask why said that a five cent makes a difference for the city of Marini- oh yeah, five cents makes a difference in the city of Mount Rainier. Those five cents have been adding up for quite a bit of time. Alright, so I've got Danielle and Valerie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, Ron and Mr. Kamali, that uh Joseph answer uh asked the questions that I had. Uh Mr. Kamali, in in your email, and just to clarify what you just said. In your email, you said uh the five point eight million, that's gonna be after the one point five that we do tonight? Or is that before the one point five?
Mr. Kamali, that you wanna answer that one?
Yes, the one point five is already subtracted, so right now we have five point eight. Which is four point nine of that five point eight is invested, as Ron explained it, in the PNC Bank. So this one is already subtracted, so one point five is not included in my email that I sent it to you and Joseph this afternoon.
Thank you so much, that makes me feel so much better. And if I can just say, I think some of the miscon- misunderstanding, Ron, you know, you you mentioned that the four point nine is in the uh investments that's highly liquidable over the course of a few days. People may have misunderstood that as a rainy day fund or something, you know, money that we can get if necessary. So I think that may be the misunderstanding. Okay. Both of you gentlemen, thank you so very much for clarifying that, I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Valerie, go ahead.
Um yeah, thank you. Um as Joseph mentioned, it's great to see all the grants that are coming in that we now have to account for, so that's that's excellent work, um and thank you to your city staff for doing all that work. Um and then I think I just wanna thank uh this council and and previous councils for doing all they could to save money um throughout the budget for the last three years that I've been here. Um I've seen that work happening and I think that's why we can uh invest in complete Pots Hall finally, so we can move in and and have in-person meetings and and do all the things that the community wants us to do. So thank you, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Um so obviously, thank you guys, and I think we've been working at this for quite a few years. This was the reason why it was important to get our audits in place to figure out where our money was going, to make sure we have more efficient budgets to figure out what we needed to do. But at the same time, I think that um we also need to realize that this um building, it was, it is a historical building, it is a building for the city, and it was in really, really bad shape. So if we wanna lead by example as a city, right? We need to make sure we take care of our house and organize it in order to make sure this building was completed. But the other thing is add um, we have managed to be able to raise um more, more than half of the funds needed for this building to happen. And some of the changes that needed to happen for this building were not cheap. That included like creating a whole entire space for an elevator and an elevator to go along with it. And that usually skyrockets um any price um on it as well as making it ADA compliant. The other thing that that's not added to that, but you did read it in the grant proposal for moving on it. It will be having solar panels as well, and that was also through the efforts of a grant. So we wanted to make sure that we're also um key in hitting um our green initiatives. So therefore, that was also important to continue generating um solar um energy, not just in the city hall building, but in all the other city buildings. So we're moving forward very efficiently with that. So the price tag for the building um has heavily um been more than half covered by um additional costs and will continue uh finding any resources as things continue to increase and change. And the building to see um how else we could finance other stuff. So thank you guys for the hard work on this. So I'm gonna open it up to the community if they have any comments and Amon, I'll be in touch with you, um me and Mr. Kamali will be in touch with you, okay? No apologies needed. Thank you for showing up today and we appreciate the work that we collectively do with WSSC um Water and how pro- how reactive you guys are whenever we need help, so thank you for that. Alright, so in the meantime, if you're a member of the community which is speaking this item, please type your name on it and Meli does five minutes at as of as of three minutes ago or five minutes ago, Meli? Melissa, how much time is left? Three, thank you so much, Melissa. Alright, anything on Facebook? Jared? Alright, and I see no comments here. So this item is for vote tonight. I'm gonna um motion to adopt ordinance oh three dash twenty twenty five budget amendment number two. Can I have a second?
Second.
Is you probably moved in second, any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none. This budget amendment has passed unanimously. Thank you guys so much, and obviously echoing the thank you to our past members of councils um for making sure we got to the point where we have enough money to be able to afford the building. Um the grants that this uh, you know, collective was able to put and efficient on how we spend our money. Alright, perfect. Okay, so moving on to item number six. Second reading and adoption resolution oh two dash twenty twenty five proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month. The mayor council will have a second reading of the adoption of resolution oh two dash twenty twenty five proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month. Um just as a point of information, a proclamation was sent and it was read in April and it was shared through our social media. This is just um moving things from proclamation to resolution, so it's more like um more of an administrative task than anything. Um Valerie, can you go ahead and do the honors?
Yeah, resolution of the mayor and council of Mount Rainier claiming April as Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Mount Rainier is proud to honor the history, culture, heritage and contributions of Arama- Arab Americans in our community throughout Maryland and our nation, and whereas the uh month of April is nationally recognized and celebrated as Arab American Heritage Month since twenty seventeen. Whereas this year's theme is honoring the past, inspiring the future, reflects and celebrates the Arab American community's historical legacy, recognizing the past genera- uh the present generation and inspiring the next generation of leaders. And whereas for over a century, the Arab American community has been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect and key roles in the advancement um in the multiple fields of studies, including but not limited to do arts, culture, science, math, politics, history, business, music, sports, medicine, economic development, education, agriculture, literature, dance, high technology, military service and education. And whereas the history of Arab Arab Americans in the United States um at times remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bi- bigotry and anti Amer- anti-Arab hate, which must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. And whereas the Arab community brought with them to the US, um their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education and diversity and faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy and whereas the Arab community and their descendants since migrating to the United States have shared uh their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and whereas the city of Mount Rainier will continue to work toward becoming an inclusive city in which all community, past, present and future are respected and that the Arab American community is recognized for their contributions to the city, country and the world and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Mount Rainier recognizes and acknowledges the contributions, achievements and influences of the Arab Arab American community and resolved that the mayor and couns- ma- mayor and city council of Mount Rainier proclaims April as Arab American Heritage Month.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Alright, council, it is the, it is up for voting since it is the second reading, right, Meli? Yes, Mr. Kamali as well. Um any feedback on it? If not, just put your thumbs up and we'll go through voting, because I'm trying to like, I'm sure you will wanna it's been a long election day. Good? Alright, go ahead, Joseph.
I'm hoping you could, there's two minor things I was hoping you could fix. The second whereas uh didn't end in a semicolon and 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 so uh some of the first letters after the whereas is were not capitalized. So I'm hoping before we sign those those minor errors be fixed.
That'll be taken care of.
Resolution.
Thank you so much, yeah. So I I don't, once the resolution is presented, I cannot touch it until it's here. So I did uh made Amelia aware that that is gonna be edited, alright? So um we'll go ahead and capitalize, so there's a need to capitalize in the semicolons and then it'll be ready for sign, okay? Good, thank you. Valerie?
I'm good, thank you.
Jenny?
I'm good, thank you.
Danielle?
I am good as well, thank you.
Alright, so motion on the floor to uh, oops, sorry guys. To adopt resolution number oh two dash twenty twenty five proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month. Can I get a second?
I will second it.
Thank you so much, Joseph. Uh any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none. Okay, this has passed unanimously, thank you so much. Okay, new, sorry, new business, discussion and board legislative meeting calendar for FY twenty twenty six. Mayor council will board on the legislative meeting calendar for FY twenty twenty six. Can you put it up, please, Meli? So you guys received this beautiful document and basically what it is for I could only account for the last ten years, right? At least for the last ten years and more, I think like further than that, maybe even twenty, the mayor council has met the first and third Tuesday of the month on the clock with the exceptions that we made if it's um something like a big election, right, or an election. You know, we decided to carry this because it's supposed to be a small meeting, but um for elections, special holidays, or if we're out of town um doing conferences, we have chosen not to have meeting those days in order to make sure that we're not running around like maniacs um trying to get in, but also to make sure heavily that our residents are able to listen to the conversation. Okay? So this is what the calendar looks like. Um, if you notice, um, that's it. It goes from September all the way to June. This calendar could be adjusted, so don't feel like, you know, if you voted it tonight, um, and and we need to adjust something, we just adjusted. You know, but at least this gives a sense of like uh put the days on the calendar, and our residents know we're supposed to meet, although for the most part is the first and the third. When um next year, seeing that we're gonna have um various things going on, election, it might potentially change. But at this point, um, this is what it looks like. Okay? You looked at it, you received this, you have examined it. If later on you think of a date that shouldn't, that we need to adjust, just send it to uh city clerk, city manager, and myself, and we will bring it back to the drawing board, okay? Danielle, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just have one, one question. Um, on here, it said, can you hear me? Okay. Um, it says that meetings are currently being held online, virtual and person meetings are to be de- uh to be determined. Mr. Kamali, do you think that City Hall will be open before September second?
I am hoping because we just had a meeting yesterday with a contractor. Contractor is at the end of the project, and based on their schedule, they're gonna finish on June twenty-third. I give it ju- end of June, June the thirtieth. Then we have to go after U N O and have the county to come and do the final walkthrough. So July probably, it's gonna be, hopefully, I'm hoping for the August because uh, you know, I'm trying to be optimistic, but the latest, it could be September when the council are coming back, and hopefully, everything is good to go.
Awesome, thank you. Um, I would just, um, I would just like to change the the wording on there that uh the intention is to be in person, online, until Pots Hall is finished. That would be my suggestion.
Put the resolution up again, Meli, because I don't think it's say, it's not saying that it's not. So I don't know if we need to adjust anything.
It, it's.
What is it saying? Hold on. What is it saying? Customs rule will be held the first of the month, whatever it is. Uh, meetings are currently held online, in-person meetings to be determined. So leave it to be determined, because if not, we will invalidate it if there's a change, and we all know the county is not we would like to say is reliable. The new council has put money forward towards a new liaison for um uh governmental. You know, so I would say to be determined, and it does not damage, it's just showing that the meetings are gonna be held during those days. And that's it. It doesn't tie us up to anything else. So I will say that um let it be for right now, until we're able to get a specific date. If not, we're gonna have to um go through a whole process to adjusting this, and going through adjusting this, it takes two readings, and that is over a month to get through it. So just so you are aware. And with the current uh governmental conditions, I don't want to tie us to anything. So I'll say to be determined will be fine in case we need to have a meeting prior. It's not stopping us from anything. So, council, there was a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna be calling up for a vote. Any um objections? Abstentions? Hearing none, it has passed unanimously. Okay, so uh the next one is vote on council recess for July and August is twenty twenty-five. Maryland Council vote on going into recess for July and August twenty twenty-five. Um, this was actually established within, I want to say, the last maybe five to six years. Um, because I think prior to that, the months were split. At certain point, I think maybe three councils ago or something like that, we decided to do it together. It gives time for us to reset um for the staff to work on the different things we need to, they need to work on. And also gives them a time for them to be able to take some time off. Um, and they do a beautiful job of rotating, so that way the building is always open. In the meantime, we do everything we need to do. This does not mean that we're not gonna meet. It does means that we're not falling under the first and the third, but if an emergency meeting needs to happen, we will make it happen. Okay? So, motion on the floor to approve uh consult research for July and August twenty twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There being a second, thank you, Valerie. Um, any discussion? Objections, suspensions, hearing none. Um, this passes unanimously, and and trust when I say the staff very much also appreciates because they put endless amount of hours towards the city. As an example, this last two weeks, we have been working on projects nonstop in um events um from one to the other. So it it takes um it's about four events in the last less than seven days that we're been collaborating, and that's not even all of them. All right, so moving on to the next item, first reading of resolution O three dash twenty twenty-five nominating members of the City Design Review Committee of L L M U T C for a two-year term beginning July sixth, twenty twenty-five. Maryland Council will hold the first reading of the resolution. Nominee members of the City Design Review Committee to a two-year term beginning July sixth, twenty twenty-five. Can you put up the names on the screen, Meli? So for um just a quick recap of this, the city um usually nominates a group of people that have very skillful, the very many skills when it comes to sign architecture and so on. That next step is like we send a letter saying this is what us, after we vote, the city has moved forward to approve these people, and then the county goes in and like approves them and sort them in. And there are representatives when it comes to anything um like um design and displays and so on, when it comes to businesses, the out- outside, when it comes to homes. And for Mount Rainier has been key, mainly because we are a historical city, and the city has heavily, when I say heavily with a capital H, been um involved in making sure that we make strong recommendations when it comes to zoning. And they are the people that helped to carry on um the mission. In the past, we have turned like, you know, um, letters upon letters, packages upon packages. Um, many of them led by constable Brian Nettler, and also different members of um the review design board and residents that um very much love, they recommend them, and then listen to us, and we have sent them, and we're very happy to see that the county adopted. I would like to say at least that ninety-eight percent of the recommendations, maybe even more, but I'll give two percent room for um for improvement, but it was a high percentage of recommendations and stuff to pass through. All right, so, um Valerie, I started drinking water. You ready for this? Go ahead.
All right. Nominating meta- members to the city, cities design review committee for a two-year term beginning on July sixth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas on November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, the district council approved CR one thirty-six dash twenty twenty-one, the county-wide MAP amended amendment CMA, which reclassified properties in the M U T C uh mixed-use town center zone to the L M U T C legacy mixed-use town zone, town center um zone effective April one, twenty twenty-two, and whereas the Prince George County uh zoning ordinance states that uh each L M U T C includes a local design review committee, that is advisory to the planning board, and whereas each L M U T C design review committee com- consists of seven members nominated by the respective legislative body bodies of the municipal corporations and are confirmed by the planning board. And whereas the term of service for L M U T C design review committee members is two years, and whereas a minimum of one serving member on each L M U T C design review committee shall be a design professional or demonstrate experience, experience in the fields of architecture, engineering, historic preservation, or planning. And whereas the terms of the members of the design review committee for the city of Mount Rainier, the city are expiring as of July sixth, twenty twenty-three. And and the city wishes to nominate members for the succeeding two-year term. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council in the city of Mount Rainier that section one, the city nominates the following individuals, having the fields of expertise set forth below to serve on the city's design review committee, and request that the Prince George County Planning Board appoint them to two-year terms. Um, so the names are Robin Bliss with dem- uh demonstrated experience of design professional, like Alina Brave, design professional Nathan Birch, Nathan Cedarth, um, design professional Sachin Kandiri, um Samantha Kay, design professional, and Anthony Lee, design professional. Section two, the resolution is adopted by this council of the city of Mount Rainier this day of twenty twenty-five and shall take effect immediately, provided that a fair summary has been read at the meeting at which it is introduced and not adopted, and a copy shall be posted at CD Hall for at least two weeks after it becomes effective, and that a fair summary is published at once in a newspaper, having general circulation in the city, inclusive of the city's newsletter, or otherwise delivered to every city household.
So I think I already saw two it. It's one of them is like it expires on twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-three, so that needs to be added. And the other thing is like if we could pass it to legal, because I wasn't sure if we still have to circulate it in the newspaper for two weeks or not, or circulation in our newsletter will be efficient. Okay? The other thing, if you stop by the names, is actually the people that are currently serving, and they have like chosen to serve for two more years. We are required to do only one with design expertise, but but Rainier is an overachiever, and we have um most of the team is um, you know, expertise in design, so we have a very strong team that we send to be able to um advocate um for our wonderful city, um, and they work closely with the county. So when it comes to this, it's like we appointed, but they're they're not technically a committee of the city. They're a committee that represents the city. So I want to make sure that distinction happens. So the meetings are usually like, you know, run and held by uh the county, not by um, not by us, and the agenda is also not set by by us neither. Our mission for, for this collective is uh appoint, uh nominate for appointment should be the right thing, and then they get um appointed and you know, sorn it and everything through um the county. All right? So I'll start with first saying thank you for your willingness to serve once again. Uh, they do meet at in various schedules at night. So we definitely appreciate the work that they do for this. All right. So council, this was just, Meli, can you bring it um up? This was the first reading, right? This is the first reading, and I am gonna, Mr. Kamali, look into it, because in two weeks will be a work session, so I would like to have a one-item meeting in order for us to have the second reading, in order to make sure we meet the, the deadline. So if you guys could talk to Lisa to figure out if the newsletter or um uh email blast will will do, and posting along with City Hall. We do, um, there are people that have been serving um for like, like we mentioned two years prior, so this is not new people. So the requirements might be a little bit different, and so far we haven't gotten, you know, nothing but praises for the great work that they do. All right, council, so if you have any follow-up questions on that, reach out. Um, but so far, thank you, um, L M U T C. Um, current candidates, um, current uh members and um upcoming uh candidates for putting your name back on the list. We definitely appreciate the service that you provide for us. All right, moving on to the next. Yes, Joseph, go ahead.
Say something, something.
Go ahead.
Um, first, I wanted to say, um, having done some research on the uh L M U T C, L M U T C and the zoning over the uh past few days to understand this resolution, I wound up uh talking to some of the county staff that work on as part liaisons for the L M U T C design review committee, and they had nothing but great things to say about the city, about the staff, and not about the staff, about the representatives from our city that are working on this committee. So I especially wanted to thank everyone for that. I did also want to though propose um a, a new title for the resolution, since I think it's a, a little confusing uh the way it's written, that makes it sound like it's our, our design review committee. And I was want, I wanted to throw some language out of nominating members for appointment to the design.
Favor, Joseph, hold on. Can you move the resolution up, Meli, so we can all see the same document? Okay, right now it says nominating members to the city design review committee. Uh, that's from the old title. I know what you're saying. Now nominating members to the city out to nominating, go ahead, do me a favor. Go ahead and read it, and if you can send it to Melissa and Mr. Kamali and me, so we go ahead of it, that will help, but go ahead and read it.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest nominating members for appointment to the design review committee representing the city of Mount Rainier for a two-year term beginning on July sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I think that works. So send the language to uh Meli, Kamali, and I, and we'll make it work, and and uh Meli, Mr. Kamali, the two, the other addition that I had was to change it where the term expires in twenty twenty-five. Instead of twenty twenty-three, we missed one, one of them. We miss one. Every so often it happens. All right? And we'll double check if anything. Thank you, Joseph, for um, that will make it a little bit clearer on it. Okay? And then also reach out to Lisa to figure out how it has to be in the newspaper or how the circulation um works uh when it comes to this. If it could be done in our newsletter, actually, if it could not be an email blast and through our social media and posted in City Hall in order to make sure. So council, for the work session, we are gonna have a legislative meeting in top of it um starting at seven, and then we'll fall right into the work session to make sure that um we're able to vote and approve this, because once we wouldn't approve, we need to like do our due diligence and then send it um, send it out. It's, it's too diff- so Chevalier, see, your commie, the sign review board's name has changed to sign review committee. It's two different committees. The DRB and the L M U T C is two different committees. So it's not the, it's not the same one. That's the reason why uh Joseph wanted to put a little bit of clarity on it in order to make sure. So the sign review board, that is the city committee. And uh L M U T C is like we nominate them to a county committee. That's the difference. Uh, Danielle, what is it?
Uh, yeah, I actually, I actually sent Mr. Kamali an email asking to clarify this. He's smiling and nodding his head. Is there any way we can like add or in parentheses on there, the um LM, the L M U T C, so that there is some distinction, because that is a confusing, um, a confusing action.
That Danielle, that's what Joseph asked in his request for changing the name of the title, so that way it distinguish uh the L M U T C and the name itself. So the title's gonna change, so that way it will be reflecting that, so it will not say, it would, uh, put it back up, Meli, I'm so sorry. Um, it will not read what it reads right now, so he will send the language out, so in the second reading, you guys will see it. So right now it says the city's design review committee, so uh the suggestion that Joseph was making was to change the last word to reflect what exactly we're nominating them for, and L M U T C was part of the title that he's gonna be adding and sending. So the title's gonna change to clarify that, so that's been covered.
Oh, I'm sorry, then my, my misunderstanding. I thought he just said representing Mount Rainier. I didn't know he added that one. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he cleared. So uh Chevalier, you, you're welcome. Um, okay, perfect. All right, so this is a reading, no vote for tonight, so if you could set the wording, we'll fine-tune it to make sure it has it, and then for here in two weeks, we'll bring it back up for the second reading in order to have it ready to go. Okay? All right, perfect. Uh, to to do, any feedback, anything else from the community? Nope, okay. All right, so moving on to the next item. I'm sorry, my, my eyes are hurting. I've been reading like no stop. Um, the first reading of resolution O four dash twenty twenty-five proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Uh, Maryland Council will have the first reading of resolution O four dash twenty twenty-five proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. This one, we put it here, we turn it into from a proclamation to a resolution. I need to do a little bit more work on it. So I apologize, but I want to make sure it was in front of you guys to read it. This has been read since twenty twenty-three, correct, Meli? Can you put it up on the screen? Since twenty twenty-three where the proclamation happened, so um, again, there are some little grammatical errors we need to work on. Uh, but we will work on it on the next round uh when it comes back up to council. So at least as an example, where it's like um, where the first letter after the whereas is gonna be capitalizing each of them. We'll make sure the semicolons are, are aligned with the end, you know, semi, uh, semicolon end. All right, so go ahead and read it for the record, Valerie, please. And then we'll like, we adjust the other things that we need to adjust, because there's some more things that I were suggested to change. Go on, Valerie.
All right, resolution of the mayor and council of Mount Rainier, Maryland, proclaiming May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Um, whereas since the first Jewish immigrants arrived in the United States in the sixteenth century, Jewish people have been instrumental in the prosperity of our state and nation, and whereas Jewish American Heritage Month was first recognized nationally by President George W. Bush in two thousand and six and has been reaffirmed in the following years, and whereas Jewish Americans continue to enrich every part of American life, and the city of Mount Rainier as educators and entrepreneurs, the arts, athletes, um, and artists, scientists, and entertainers, public officials. the arts, athletes, um, and artists, scientists and entertainers, public officials and activists, labor and community leaders, diplomats and military service members, public health heroes and more. And whereas during the Jewish American Heritage Month, we elevate the achievements and contributions made by the Jewish Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual and political and political and, uh, whereas Jewish suffragists have uh, fought to expand freedom and justice and Jewish faith leaders uh, linked arms with the giants of the civil rights movement to demand equal rights for all. And whereas early on, they fought for religious freedom, helping to find one of the better principles upon which America was built, Union soldiers celebrated Passover in the midst of the Civil War. And whereas during this month, I encourage all residents to, of Mount Rainier to seek out ways to engage with Jewish history, including museum exhibits, uh, literary works and more. And whereas in May twenty twenty-three, President Biden launched the White House National Strategy um, to counter antisemitism, an effort with bipartisan backing that is one of the most ambitious, comprehensive efforts in the United States' history to counter an- antisemitism. And whereas I call upon residents of the city of Mount Rainier to take action at the community level to ensure that discrimination of any kind, including antisemitism, are unacceptable in the city of Mount Rainier. And whereas during this month, let us celebrate the many contributions Jewish people continue to make in Mount Rainier, Maryland and throughout the United States. And now therefore be it resolved, um, that the mayor and council, mayor and city council of Mount Rainier recognizes and analogies the contributions, achievements and influences of the Jewish American community and uh, resolved that the mayor of mayor and city council of Mount Rainier proclaims May as Jewish A- American Heritage, Heritage Month.
Thank you so much. I'm also gonna change the I's the we because the proclamation start with I. That's the way they work, but we're gonna change it to we because it's like uh, mayor and council. So there's little semantics I'm gonna change, but at least I wanna give you guys on it. Once, once we turn it in, it goes live, we are not allowed to change it until like further notice, okay? So I'll make those changes and there's some paragraphs I'm gonna combine at the end, but it's gonna stay more or less the same. So, alright. So no action on this. It's just like for you to read it. So we're just gonna clean it up a little bit more and I'll be ready for vote on the next, um, on the next meeting, alright? Alright, any feedback? We're good? Alright, if not, send it to me and I'll figure it out. Okay. Uh, ta 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 ta. Okay, vote on approval of minutes. The mayor and council will vote on approving the following minutes, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Work session and budget legislative meeting for proposal for F Y twenty-six budget. May sixth, twenty twenty-five legislative meeting, um. What, there's an amendment, um. Let me know what the amendment is, Mel- um, Melissa. Because it has to be presented. In May twelve, twenty twenty-five, special legislative meeting. So what's the amendment? Can you put it in the screen? The proposed amendments, the contractor working the project provided background on his company, explained the scope of his project. Is that the proposed amendment? What is the amendment, Ellie? Or Mister Kamali?
Yes, well, uh, you see it that, that was asked by council member to make sure that we change it in the minutes, you know, not to mention the name of the contractor. So.
Okay, so as, as a bit of a historical reference, we usually put the name of the contractor because for record-keeping, both for our code and for the public, they know who's responsible for, for the work. And we have been in positions prior, um, where we have had residents where contractors have not done a good job in their homes. And they've asked the city who they are and um, and they've been upset at the fact that we're not highlighting. So uh, Mister, we call was doing Mister Watson. If you guys don't wanna put Mister Jay Watson on it, that'd be on it, but we need to have Elisa name the showcase. Who's the person that spoke to mayor and, and council? I think it's like, there is a video recording. So that's a public record as well. Joseph, I see your mic open. Go ahead. I'm assuming you make the
Yes, I, I made the proposed amendment. And after, after uh, discussing this with a few folks, uh, including Mayor Benitez offline, um, I'm going to withdraw this amendment. My particular concern isn't necessarily that uh, um, it was about the contractors. I was thinking about a general case, but I'm more concerned about listing out a homeowner or uh, uh, someone who resides in the house for their own personal privacy, especially you know, from the instance of where maybe a stalker will be easily be able to find these minutes online and then track down the person. So I'm less concerned about that as a contractor and I understand the, the history of it. So I, I I, I do think we should always have the homeowner just say the owner as it does in the other minutes, but I'm fine if the, we don't change this, make this amendment.
Thank you, Joseph. And Millie, whenever that happens, do me a favor, under proposal and put the name of the person cuz I, I didn't know who it was, but in for the futures of what, we are aware that there is a, a, a proposed, um, a proposed change, okay? So one and two, um, I think that from what I recall from the minutes, we don't put the we put the, even in the agendas, we put the address, we don't put the name. But if they come to speak, it is public record, so just F Y I and everything is on, everything's online. So we go always like add the last name on it, but for the most part, even when the residents come, they usually go and here's the contractor. So it's very few times that um, the resident has pitched, it's usually their contractor or their representative. Um, but yeah, alright, thank you, Joseph, for that. Okay. Alright, so council, we have three rounds of minutes to approve. Motion to approve the minutes for April fifteenth, May sixth, May twelve, as originally submitted. Can I have a second?
Second.
Is we probably move in second any discussion? Abstention? Uh, objection, hearing none, the three sets of minutes have passed unanimously. And again, um, and you guys hear me thanking the team profusely for having this minutes. But when you've had gone several years without having them, um, the team uh, for information purpose, when you elected officials and the residents are hearing, they had it to rebuild a more than three years' worth of minutes. So for a while, we were like approving stacks of minutes that not only were they hearing the meetings and putting together in order for us to have, also lining them up in the website. So now on the website, you have the meeting, you have the agenda, you have the approved minutes all cohesively so we could follow through, but also um, it didn't take for um, us, like, you know, I know I, I went back and reviewed and compared the minutes and they did a wonderful job, so for us to have minutes that are reflective of, um, in this case, May twelve, which was literally um, you know, not even a, a month ago, uh, tells you how far we have, um, we have come in turning around and making sure the minutes are submitted and and following through with this. So we definitely wanna appreciate all the hard work that um, that they done. Alright, so um, this is for the minutes. They already made a motion and on it, so this is already closed, so we're gonna move on to item number twelve. Um, Chevalier, this is your comment, so if it's about the presenting of the minutes, you could ask for it right there. Hold on, hold on, Melia. Yes, you can.
Uh, no, it's not.
Okay, ho- oh, alright, Chevalier. Alright, let me, sorry, you guys, I'm like, my phone is blasting with people like letting us, the poll has closed. Um, okay, presentation of minutes. The city clerk will present the May twenty twenty-five workstation minutes to the mayor and council. You will find those in your package. Um, and they'll be uh, for vote, um. I might decide to throw this out cuz if, I might decide to throw this on the meeting as well for the work session so we could get him approved cuz I'm trying to make sure that we approve cuz once approved, they upload it to the website, makes life easier for us to follow. So Chevalier was the, I think you said, no, it wasn't. It's a question regarding the minutes submitted?
Uh, it's a question regarding the um, public statement about the DHS's putting Mount Rain, calling Mount Rainier Sanctuary City, so not on the agenda, just whenever there's a chance for the public to ask a question.
So that was in public comment at the beginning of the agenda? And we're down to, yeah, the public comment was number three? Number three on the agenda. Initially, we like go through the agenda, we actually read through the whole entire agenda, giving time for the public to come and our wonderful council members gave beautiful uh, presentations to give time for people to come. So that's when it, um, that's when it opened up for like public comment. Okay?
I'll, I'll send you guys an email.
Alright, thank you so much. Item number thirteen, uh, motion to adjourn. Damn, you guys took forever to try to. You guys wanna stay here longer than you need to. Alright, so probably moved in second. Any discussion? Objection, abstentions, uh, hearing none. We uh, call this meeting to close at eight sixteen P M. Thank you guys so much and the polls have officially closed at eight o'clock. Um, so we'll officially be hearing, um, you know, the results for the new county executive for Pregeorge's County. And I believe District Five County Council Member, um, election wasn't developed for District Five. We're District Two, so it wasn't um, a problem. So thank you guys so much for being here and um, thank you staff for your wonderful work and we will see plenty of you this week, including on Saturday for the Pride um, parade. Alright, have a good night.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.
Hi, Ms. Wanda, good to see you. Alright, bye guys, take care.